Okay, I call this meeting to order at go to and we will be both all Cheryl Fessel, co-chairman is here. Kevin, Dana, Gary, Eric, and Robin. Great. Is there any public comment? That will come later. Okay, we'll move on to updates. Johnny.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Thanks for making our meeting. I have just a few updates for you on the Verde River at Clarkdale. We see received draft agreement from Arizona State Parks Board. It is still under review with the town manager, myself and our attorneys. And we'll have more to get with you at some point in going through those contracts. It takes a little bit. So I'll get back to you with with the details on how that's going to come out. And then we do have some expectations of flooding. And actually, I was going to bring it and decided not to print, so I will send you all the town protocols on how we handle flooding at our river access points so that you can understand how that's going. And Jerry will Jerry will particularly care about that. Who's going to be knocking at my door? We actually do close the wraps at a certain point, but not until like 15,000 CFS. We do close the launch, the kayak launch areas at 500. So to make sure that folks aren't being taking risks that they shouldn't take.
So we're anticipating some flooding because of the snow melt?
Yeah, yeah. And yeah. Oh, here comes somebody. Then regarding Cabo Yarol Park. It's been a little bit of a challenge. We have received three bids for the project. And we unfortunately have kind of gone round and round. We had some issues with the bid with the low bid contractor. And the long and short of it is that we are bringing to council next Tuesday a recommendation to decline all bids and we are going to start over. So we'll put the package back out and probably we'll have the same books bid on it, but it's it's just been it's been a bumpy road and we want to make sure that we do it right and we don't have any any complaints in our processes. So we want to we want to start. We're going to start fresh. See how that goes. Again, I'll keep you posted. Sponsorships. Oh, that's what I forgot. State Farm has agreed to sponsor our several of our events, not all as they've done in the past. We have a $2,000 sponsorship from Salt River Material Group for Fourth of July. And then all of our other public community events will be sponsored by State Farm. So she's doing concerts, the holiday lighting, Halloween, and the Santa Comes to Clarkdale events. Concerts in the Park scheduled is at your desk with the bands that were chosen. And I want to thank our band selection committee for the work that they did and helping us select. It wasn't easy. We had near 40 bands apply. And so it was quite a process to break it down, but we got there. And we're also don't don't forget, we need, if you haven't already signed up for some concerts, please be sure and reach out to Cheryl.
I know who's available for all the concerts. We can probably just develop a schedule.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Also, when I remind you, we do have volunteer appreciation. You should have gotten a notice invitation for that and to be sure and come because it's a lot of fun and we want to see you there. The Trails Master Plan was approved and signed and is ready to go. We have a kickoff meeting scheduled with them next Wednesday. And that will just start the staff and then we'll begin that process of opening it up to community members. And lastly, the Gazeebo project is going to go through a state bidding process through Gordian, which is qualified to the contractors that have signed up with them are qualified to do work for us without having to go out and get bids. And so community development is taking that to the next level and working with those folks to get get that project started, hopefully get it done before concerts in the park. We are talking about options, but that doesn't happen. And that's all I have for you. Do you have any questions about any of those things?
Okay. Move on to the minutes. Everyone got a chance to look them over. Does anybody have any discussion or changes? Anybody want to move to accept them?
Look to accept the minutes from February 8th meeting as written.
I'll suck them in. Okay, new business, the Verde River Institute Program Partnership.
I guess so. In your packet, I provided pretty extensive information about the Verde River Institute and some of their history with the town. And Mr. Van Gossick is here this evening to talk to you a little bit more about the idea of a partnership with Verde River Institute. One of the things I want you to keep in mind as as you're considering this is the fact that the town of Clarkdale, you already know what our limited resources are. So when we have an opportunity to partner with other folks that are doing the hard work and we're able to assist in promotion and be a part of that. It's really helpful for us to have to have that relationship and it also helps others in others in the community. So we'll just keep in mind, Doug, I will pass it over to you.
Thank you, Johnny. Thank you all. You might be interested in this graph that I was just looking at. This is the graph of the hydrograph of the river right now. And what it shows is that it peaked at about 800 CFNs, this big peak here. It's been going from 600 to about 450 every day on that diurnal schedule. So at night, the snow melts again up there and then in the daytime it comes down. The good thing about I see about this graph, as far as you guys are concerned, is that these these 600 CFS peaks means that it's going to be discharging a lot of that water gradually instead of all at once. So the big dangers in the Verde River to have a huge snowpack up there and then a warm rain and a bunch of warm days and all of it come down at one time, which it did in 1993. And it peaked at 53,400 CFS that year.
Wow.
That's a lot of water. So even right now, it's over that 500 foot level that that you have set. Johnny and I were talking because every year the outfitters that operate commercial trips on the Verde River within the town of Clarkdale's park system, the Verde River at Clarkdale have to guess how many people they're going to have out there. We put deposits down. We we give the an operator's plan to Johnny every year. And Johnny looks at that and makes sure that what we say in our operational plan fits with the goals of the town of Clarkdale. One of those things was that the town of Clarkdale normally gives educational trips some gratis trips. So normally, everybody that I take out on the river, everybody that Clarkdale Kayak or Outdoor Adventure Center takes out on the river. Those outfitters have to pay the town of Clarkdale and Arizona State Parks a fee for each person. And however, if they're doing educational trips, there are a certain number of free trips. So we were looking at what we're going to be doing in this year. And it kind of got muddy really because what we found out was that I was going to be doing more than the number of free trips, but Johnny and everybody felt like we were going to be accomplishing the goals of the town of Clarkdale at the same time and of the parks board. And so we kicked around what we could possibly do about this and came across something that I think should have occurred to me a long time ago. And that's that a lot of what we do on our Verde River Monitoring and Education Program, which I'll describe in a second. Is right out of your book, you know, this is what you guys want. This is the kind of a program that we would like to do and support for the town of Clarkdale as well as for the Verde River Institute and just the public in general. And that program is a program that we developed after talking to the US Forest Service. We were talking to them about how how are we monitoring all the forests in the state of Arizona? And how are we monitoring the forest along the the riparian zone of the Verde River? And we found out that that Forest Service was monitoring real supply and was monitoring a couple of other commercial crops essentially out there, but that nobody was doing any monitoring of the riparian forest, which is maybe the most important as far as any ecosystem is concerned, anywhere in the state, has the highest diversity anywhere in the state, right here in Clarkdale and right in the stretch that we're taking care of. And not to have been monitoring that, it never occurred to me that the Forest Service didn't have any kind of program going where they were keeping track of this forest and what was happening in it. Was it getting better or worse? Losing some trees or regaining, what's going on? And so using a lot of their guidelines, we developed a program of monitoring the riparian forest and all of the riparian ecosystem that depends on it. And we realized very quickly that we didn't have a cohort of people that knew what they were doing as far as this dynamic ecosystem that the Verde River is. So the river floods, it has 600 CFS days and has 60 CFS days. And they can be back to back and the trees can be really healthy or they can just all die. I mean, in in very quick succession. So the river has operates from crisis to crisis, kind of, you know? And that's a very difficult thing to monitor. It's it's also not a big commercial draw for the Forest Service. So they're not out there doing putting a lot of work and money into doing that. And there aren't a lot of people who can do effective monitoring on the Verde River because it's a unique ecosystem. Everything about it's unique. This flood regime that we go through is unique, you know, where it is is unique. The diversity is unique, the number of trees and the kinds of trees doesn't isn't duplicated anywhere else in the world. And so we just didn't have a big bunch of people that knew what they were doing. So we thought we would train them. And last year we had our first classes. We we had 12 graduates of the class. And each class has 10 lessons and they're very, very fire hose lessons. All been to those kinds of instruction. But these go all the way from Arizona Water Law and Hydrology to Pluvial Geomorphology, which is how the river makes its forms and changes its forms as it digs out one place and fills in another and and all of that. It has three specific lessons just on ecology. So people learn birds, they learn the dragonflies and damselflies, they learn the macroinvertebrates, the little bugs that live under all the rocks and how to monitor those and how to survey. And then why that's important for us to know, you know, how healthy is that part of the ecosystem and which of these things as it changes is indicative of something else. So then we do an intense tree thing. In fact, today I was out with some of last year's students doing dendrochronology, which is tree ring dating, gathering tree ring data on the various trees that are in the Verde River. And we realized that there's it's never been done before. There is no tree ring data on any of these riparian trees which are again, unique, they're strange. And you find that once you start seeing those tree rings, that's going to allow us to understand when trees were healthy, when they might have had a difficult time growing. Wind floods knocked a lot of them out or thinned them out and whatnot. So that's all written in the tree ring data once you learn to read it. So that's going to be one of our components this year in our lessons. The basic subjects that we teach are basic kayaking first. And the reason for that is just to make my life easier. I want to know that the people that we have out there that we're going to be taking out on 10 different lessons on the river are going to be safe and they're going to survive the trips. People that don't survive the trips are bad publicity for the whole thing. So we don't want that, but we just we want people to know why they have PFDs on the boats and how the boats work and, you know, how to paddle and all of those kinds of things. So that's our first lesson. Then we go through Verde River Basics. In each lesson, we'll spend about an hour on the shore at Tuzi Wrap talking about what today's lesson is going to be. And then we have about a four and a half hour trip down the Verde. You go from Lower Tapco River Access Point to Tuzi Wrap. And we talk about the practicum kind of of each of these lessons. So here's what we're talking about today and here are some examples of it. And here's how this example fits in with what you just saw, you know, a quarter mile upstream or downstream. And that's the typical way that we go about it. So Verde River Basics is water law hydrology, all kinds of things about geomorphology and whatnot of the river. We have a textbook, a 46 page textbook that we just finished. And that's anybody can download it from our website. Tells you exactly what we're going to be studying. We do botany, we do water quality. So how do we gather data like the dissolved oxygen, the temperature, the turbidity, the dissolved solids, all of those water quality parameters that people need to know in order to make intelligent decisions about what's going on in the river. We teach the students, we also teach them how to fly a drone. Because a large part of what we do with water quality and other monitoring is done by drone. So we do photography and photogrammetry, which is kind of produces a series of maps that you can actually look at on your computer and make measurements and see 3D models and everything else of this photogrammetry that we produce. And so we teach our students how that works and why it's important to to learn to operate a drone. We have a macroinvertebrate day where we go out with nets and we survey all of these little bugs that comes from come from under the rocks and how they change from a riffle to a rapid to a pool or a pond and a run and why those things are important to understand and everything. Then we do trees, monitoring dendrochronology, how the health of the of the riparian forest changes from place to place and day to day. And then finally, we do something again, that's never been done on the Verde River before. It's called EDNA, Environmental DNA Studies. So a new way that we have of finding out what fish or what frogs or what snakes or other aquatic animals are in the Verde River is we can just get a water sample and filter that water sample through a really fine fiberglass filter. And then we send that sample into a laboratory that looks at it and says, who's there? So we normally look for animals that we think are index species, they're ones that were very important, that we really want to keep track of. And again, this has never been done before. The only kinds of studies like it previous to what we're doing were we would go out with a literally with a generator on our back shocking fish who don't appreciate it, by the way, when you do that. Or you can go out and put up nets and catch them and, you know, there's a lot of a lot of mortality to that kind of thing. And it's a very expensive way to do it. So it just doesn't get done a lot. But with EDNA, all we need is this filtered water and those filters to send into a lab and they tell us, yeah, you've got this or you've got that. We thought, for instance, that two of our native fish, the the Sonoran sucker and the round-tailed chub had been extirpated from this stretch of the river. We thought they'd been fished out or or outcompeted by bass and other things that are in the river. But there they were, they showed up on the EDNA. So we're really happy to see that. And we can take those samples at various places along the Verde River at Clarkdale. And that gives us a good idea of what the distribution of those species is and and a little bit of an idea of how many there are. So EDNA is really, really kind of cool. It's expensive, but it's much cheaper than going out and shocking or doing any of that stuff. So we would be taking in general, six to eight people on each trip. We would run a trip, a class on Wednesday and a another class with different people in it on Saturday so that we have those two days are available to most people, you know? And we'll do those 10 weeks in a row. And then we start a second class later on in the fall. So in general, we're going to be doing about 24 people per year. Do more than that. One of the reasons that I keep it below six or seven people is because I can I can go out with six people without having to have another safety voter with me. And once you get 10 or 15 people out there, you kind of lose control of the whole. Cheryl, she's so imagine that you've got to keep them alive at the same time that you've got to keep them interested and teach them something out there. So that's why the low numbers, but the despite the low numbers, we have very high deliverable. So you have now, at the end of the class, you've got these people that are virtual experts in the Verde River and who will then go on to become advocates for the river, that will be talking to their friends, be talking in public. They'll be working for other conservation organizations. Some of them are working for Vena. Some of our students from last year are going to be some of the instructors this year that'll be out there with me. Or they'll be doing other work. So for instance, two of our students have adopted a piece of the river that's right where the old Main Street Bridge abutment is. It's right down there. Main Street Bridge used to cross the river, the abutment's still there. That's owned by the no, no, no. Cliff and Colay, yeah, Colay's. And so they've given us the permission to go in there and demarcate about a four and a half acre plot that we're now doing intense monitoring on. And that monitoring is being done by last year's students. So it's really cool. So what we're asking for, or what we think would be beneficial to both the town and to us is just to let us run these programs, but partner with the town of Clarkdale as far as getting the word out, you know, making giving us some kind of publicity for finding the students, talking about that. But it also allows both the town and the Verde River Institute to cooperate on some of the grants that are available. So it really looks good for us to have the town as a as a partner on those grants. And these students cost me about $1,200 apiece, each student. So it's a $25,000, $30,000 grant to do this every year. And it will, I think, help us to have the town of Clarkdale as a partner. But we can also look at other grants that benefit other things that the town of Clarkdale wants to do on the Verde River at Clarkdale and remain kind of partners in in those kinds of things. So we're not looking for any staff time. We're not looking for anything I think that's going to cost anybody any money, really. That's the goal, right? Because we understand it's spread thin right now. But yeah, that's about it. So any questions about any of that?
How did you find your student? How did you?
On the website, we we put a notice out that we're going to be doing this with a little description and it's usually pretty easy to find people. Right now, we're the spring bunch. I think we need one or two more students for it and the fall bunch is not populated yet. But that's something that the town the town might help with. And I have to tell you that I think three on the spring are Verde River ambassadors. So what we're trying to do is get the Verde River ambassadors also be Verde River experts, you know, and know all these things. So they can talk to people about it and say God, this place is fantastic, you know, that the diversity is amazing. So we expect that anytime you have an ambassador that they're probably going to go through the program, get that training.
A win-win. Yeah. How soon is the next class that already started?
No. So, yeah, because it's, we know that it's going to be a little hectic, you know? We'll start it in late April, last week in April. And then we're until the end of June and then in July, August and September is the second class. All right. Thank you.
So to to follow up also, something that Doug did mention is just our sheer water conservation place that we're in and how important it is to protect the river and we we have in our, we have in our general plan, we have in our strategic plan about programs, about teaching the community and bringing them in to the importance of why we need to protect our river and and the water within. So just some additional things to think about. Now you all can have a discussion and decide. And oh, I actually did have one additional thing. So he was mentioning the, because he is a Verde River outfitter, he pays the town for every trip that he or for each customer that he takes down the river. And he's not being paid by those customers other than his grant is helping to cover that. So that was our idea in in, you know, this partnership was to be able to allow him to do this education, which is so important. And it seems like a lot of people are really excited about it without having to compensate the town for those trips. Now, any other trips that he runs that he gets paid for, but he's not a commercial outfitter, so to speak. He's an educational interpretive outfitter. And so we really have thought about the fact that we that needs to be kind of in a different class by itself. But this program, because he has an education piece to it, I I just think that that it could be beneficial and staff recommends your your approval if you feel the same way.
Johnny, can you remind me about the volume of permits that go out regular and educational usually? I mean, what what are those thresholds now?
Oh, my. No, I can't.
Okay, I just couldn't remember. I thought it was.
It's lower. The number of educational trips that the that the commercial outfitters have or the permitted outfitters have is much lower. Usually they're about 300 or each one runs about 300.
Sure.
The the difference in what we did a few years ago, because we felt that importance of that educational piece, we offered the outfitters 100 educational trips a year. So those are trips that they're not getting paid for, that they're truly offering river education type of program. And so, you know, with that in mind, we so it allows for Boy Scout troops or the school groups for for the outfitters to be able to participate in taking them, but not have to not have to pay. Yeah.
No, that makes sense. The I remember that one thing that we'd been cognizant about was the total number of trips.
Yes.
And, you know, supporting this program seems like a great idea. But do you have any concerns about that impacting our total number? Are we getting close to kind of that theoretical ceiling?
Yeah, no, I do not have any concerns about that. And particularly because Yeah, no, I do not have any concerns about that, and particularly because um, Verde River Institute typically applies for those trips
Yeah.
through through their permit, and this would just be allowing them to do those trips outside of their permit. So um, no, I do not have any concerns of that. We have um about, I'm gonna try to remember, because charity's doing those now. Um I think we have about three thousand uh trips right now, uh regular commercial trips, paid commercial um on uh being requested. Um, because we changed that pricing a little bit uh a few years ago, where or the the system, where the system is that we had outfitters that were asking for a whole lot of trips, and they were only running a small amount. And so we were losing a lot of money. And so we put a system in place that they need to pay for eighty-five percent of the trips that they request. So our revenues have gone up pretty nicely because of that, because they're taking their job seriously. They're signing up to be outfitters with us. We want them to be doing their, doing the work. And um, so we're actually, I mean, at a place that we couldn't, we could um consider I'm not gonna say it out loud, but we could consider other options for uh to add trips. We have room to add trips, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
And there's no conflict with the other outfitters, because I'm with such a small group that you'd be taking out, there wouldn't be launch time complications and all that seems like it'd be, would go smoothly, so.
We're gonna be launching with our regular.
Within the pre-RI ones.
Yeah. And this being education only, and they are commercial paid trips. Um, it's, you know, we felt it was just a little different and that we needed to look at this in a different way.
I think it's great, and like she said, like Cheryl said, win-win. I don't see any opposition to this at all, so.
Well, I I would think, I would appreciate just uh for Parks and Recreation that maybe, you know, after each session, you know, getting I think it'd be nice to have Doug back to say, here's how it went, or, you know, as the program grows and evolves, to have periodic updates, maybe once or twice a year. I think that would be a nice thing to plan on.
It'd be cool, Doug, if you could work with the college or even the high school and get some some students and get them credit through the school for the program too.
Yeah, we're really being a little The the problem with these, low number of people who can handle it.
Yeah.
That's a lot of education you've got going on there.
You're out on the river, you've got all that energy going on all around you, and you're trying to keep people safe there all at the same time. You've got a whole bunch, so.
Yeah.
I think we could get there, uh, once we have more students that could take my job from I can say one of our students is gonna be running our trips with me this year and learning to be uh an educator himself. So as we get more of those, then we can expand the trip. A little more capacity.
You need to make a motion?
Neither. Okay. I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve of this Verde River Institute partnership.
I've taken it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, telling us about all you do. Okay. Have fun. Give her a heart for us.
Moving into the next item, so discussion items only, it's gonna be item seven A, Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. Question regarding the final SWOT analysis results.
Hmm, yeah, you guys hear that there are strategic plans going on all over, that our thought is is robust as as the work that you all are doing, so I just want you to know how much I appreciate that. Um, so hopefully you've had a little bit of time to do um, look through your packet. First of all, I want to apologize, I attached the wrong um the wrong uh SWOT analysis. I didn't attach the local recent SWOT analysis to your packet. Um, it is on page twelve of your draft minutes. So if you have your draft minutes there, if you go to page twelve, that's where it begins.
Not the one on page forty? Is that what you're saying? Strike that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Of the draft minutes. Yeah. Um, okay, so um, like we've done before, if it would be most beneficial, Cheryl has pulled up the um, the uh that analysis for us to go through step by step, kind of like we did with the strategic plan, but we're not gonna do the whole um recreation and open space thing. We're not gonna start on average. We're just gonna skip right to page thirty-seven. Um, of your packet. So, yeah, we may have to go to seven side by side. So eighteen and twenty, but that's because, so eighteen and twenty is in the middle of the far corner with the for this packet. And and so we're just gonna go through the goals and objectives, and we're going to um see how they fit in with your SWOT analysis to date, so you've already have gone through um, did did all the work to come up with your um, your SWOT, your strengths, your weaknesses, your opportunities and your threats, and then we went through the gen- the strategic plan, the town's strategic plan. Now we're looking at the town um general plan section, recreation and open space, open space and recreation, after we named that. And um, and so I'm just gonna go through, and there are some things in here that will not be in your purview, and we will, um, it will be a town staff item that would be taken on. Um, not that you can't give input to that, um, but just to let you know. Does anybody, before we start this, did anyone have any questions about the recreation, open space part of the strategic, of the general plan? It's, I know it's pretty um robust. There's a lot of stuff in there. So if you have a burning question, um, let me know. Um and if it's something that we can meet later and talk about, or that you wanna have on record of of a question of it, go ahead and and bring it to our attention sometime during this agenda, and it can be now, or did you have something that you need? Um, so, alright, let's, let's. So, on page thirty-seven, goal one is preserve and enhance natural features and open space. And um, that's to create and maintain a high quality of life through the provision of adequate natural open space. This section is really not uh in your purview for the most part. It is uh for planning and um and and parks and rec to work together on making sure that we have those open spaces, but there's nothing wrong with um having something in your strategic plan that that is something of an of importance to you, if you would like to add it. Something about. So we have the established criteria for defining natural open space, establishing standards um for open space. Review of existing codes we need to look at regarding open space. Um, we as in the town, and identify formerly recognized natural open space. So what what the whole purpose of that is, is we're gonna grow, we're gonna have, we're gonna have more subdivisions, we're gonna have some businesses. Uh, we wanna do it responsibly and make sure that we maintain our open space, that we don't have high rises going up and, you know, on that street corners kind of thing and blocking that or whatever. So that really is more within our community development department, but again, something for us to keep in mind. Did anyone have anything in that area that they thought was important to add to the SWOT analysis?
I think the only place we have it, I I maybe there are more, but we have it under threats, um encroachment of open space corridors. But in that case, are we muddying the waters by saying corridors? I mean, should we say open space in general? Because not all of them are pathways between places. So if we strike corridors, maybe that's
Makes it more general.
Makes it more general. Would that, would that service better?
Yeah, I think it would. Okay, on to goal two, two, work to achieve sustainability through regional cooperation in open space issues. And I I marked a couple of things that I thought you have already included, identify sustainability sustainability-related goals and implement best practices. Some of that may be really related to town staff. Um, kind of doing that work and finding, you know, that information and and really creating a a sustainability plan for the town. Um, but it is something that you address in in the in the goals or in the SWOT. And um, so, you know, it's something that we can leave where, just leave where it is. I forgot to write down where that one was. I mean, quite honestly, the entire town needs to be concerned with sustainability, so it's it's a broader than just parks and rec. But um yeah, anybody feel strongly about it one way or the other? Okay, moving on. Objective, um okay, uh, objective, the second objective is to work cooperatively with local school districts, governmental agencies, and public and private organizations to educate the community on the value of open space and natural resources. Remote partnerships and educational opportunities, and it um talks specifically about the Verde River at the One Master Plan.
Yeah, we we missed it that under weaknesses. Develop an education program along the Verde River.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I noted that you have that, that you have that. Yes, okay, goal three. Um, to provide access to linkages between open space parks and user-specific destinations. Uh, connect, the first objective is to connect Parkdale community to recreational opportunities through an open space network of government-owned and private land. With actions being to obtain necessary easements, provide a trail system that connects town, open space, parks, schools, local districts. Um I mark that as you have, you have, you have covered that. Is there anything more specific you wanna add to that?
Nope.
Okay. Um, goal four, provide active and passive recreational opportunities, including public access to open space, parks and trails. The objective being to continue to provide and expand recreational services and park facilities to serve Parkdale residents and visitors.
Or it under strength is park access. I don't know if it needs to be more specific. You wanna read through the actions?
It's not a bitch. Um, I marked it as fitting somewhere.
I think park access, um. Just overall objective.
Yeah, because remember that this this work we're doing is helping build that document that's gonna that that we're gonna be able to expand upon for for the end.
Is there an end?
Okay, so none of those specific, we're just running the general. Alright, new developments shall participate in the town's recreation and open space system. So actions seem to require new development at the conceptual stage to provide open space in public parks to serve new neighborhoods and communities in accordance with adopted standards for size, location, and needs of primary users. Um, our local standards, when they cover that uh during the development process to establish public um access easements and right of ways to create connect uh public trails, paths, and bicycle roads. Encourage developers to build linkages from their parks and open space areas to the appropriate nearest segment of the Parkdale Trail System. Um, if there isn't one, encourage them to contribute to the system. And then new development should address the linking of open space parks and trails that are appropriate and feasible to adjacent development. Any of those items speak to you?
I think we, I think we've got, got it covered pretty well.
This one falls under opportunities, um, the five under opportunities.
Rep, clearly, um, failing to develop the park's trails and open space.
We can refer to that point two later.
Right.
Do we need to say anything about, wasn't there a discussion about that, uh, the transportation plan, working in conjunction with this? Is that is there, is this where that would be tied in somehow, or?
Well, that's a good question.
Cause we talked about it at the meeting the other night.
Right.
And we've talked about it a couple of times.
Right. And it is something that needs to happen. Um, I think it can be a piece in here for sure. This would be an appropriate place.
Yeah, I'm not sure where.
I think we could, um, oh, in the SWOT, where we have evaluate bike lanes for new construction and roadways, that's under trails. Um and actively work on offend and connect neighborhoods, which just primarily, I mean, it's about parks, but it also recreation and open space, so. I'm looking at weaknesses, actually.
There's a bit under threats, um. Number three, under threats. Sorry.
Two working with partners, opportunities to new development. Yeah, it is there.
Long about your describing then?
So where, so where do you, where would you like?
Oh, I I don't know, I just.
Do you want all of it in there? I mean, I think it's pretty good.
We have it in there, yeah. That's fine.
Under the threats? Because it covers parks and amenities? Alright, next, um, provide sufficient resources to maintain acquire, develop, and upgrade parks, trails, and open space recreational facilities, and ensure their long-term maintenance and operation. and ensure their long-term maintenance and operation. The actions are to obtain adequate funding for staffing, acquisition and construction of new parks, trails, trailheads, recreation facilities and open space through sales tax, bonds, fees, grants, donations and other means. Implement park facilities. Implement park facilities needs assessment and translate into a five-year capital improvement plan. Determine facility life cycles and identify long-term capital spending requirements. That's a big deal. Um, and promote volunteer participation in all aspects of recreation, maintenance and operation.
Good ball, and we talked about grants wherever that ended up falling.
Um, threats, loss of talented grant writers.
Okay.
Years.
All under the threat, yeah.
Any of them that you think don't need to be there, or are you good with all of them being? Let's start doing that. Just put them all in there, then we can eliminate later. Okay, that's a good idea. Uh, objective. Uh, next objective, design and operate recreational programming. Open space areas, trails and facilities in sustainable, safe and efficient ways and provide ADA accessible options where appropriate. The actions are to work with Parks and Rec Commission to evaluate the Parks and Rec strategic plan for continued relevance. Develop public trails, paths, open space and parks that are attractive, safe and easy to maintain. Implement energy and water efficient strategies when appropriate. Promote volunteer participation in all aspects of recreation programs and services. Volunteer programs might include training, establish standards and recognition programs, continue to offer recreation programming to meet the needs of the Parkdale community. So I think we had, I marked number five.
Under opportunities.
Yeah, um. Promoting education on stewardship opportunities for parks, that's focused specifically on the river. Who else?
Now, the creation of strategic plan falls under opportunities too, which is working with the Parks and Rec Commission. I guess just the promote volunteer participation doesn't really fit there, maybe put a note by that, but the potential relocation for that one.
Okay, very good. Awesome, good. Forget your act.
Good.
Okay, number five, goals, provide public access to Verde River recreation with preservation in mind. Um, the objective to protect and preserve the Verde River and its habitat while allowing responsible public access. Actions being to support relative, relative aspects of the Verde River master plan, which I, you have one up here for you printed for you to pick with you. And Robyn, I will send you yours electronically, or I'll print it out for you and you can pick it up when you're feeling better. Um, uh, Verde River encourages responsible recreation and paddle with the natural and cultural environment. Uh, develop planned features such as parks and trail systems that allow people to recreate at the river and connect with other points of interest. Obtain voluntary conservation easements and development rights from landlords to secure access and protect sensitive areas from further development. And support regional planning efforts with stakeholders to create and maintain coordinated regional protection and environmental sustainability of the Verde River corridor. Opportunities. Number two. At least. Is there any mention of Verde Front and?
No, I'm not seeing that.
It's in our, that's in the strategic plan. Trying to get them all jumbled up. So you would like all of these to go under number five in strengths to be added there?
Yes. Y'all seem just very focused on river access.
Okay, anything else that stood out to you? That's all of the golden objectives in the um, recreation and open space element of the general plan for the town.
What's the next step for this process?
The next step will be, we're gonna take your SWAT and, um, this final, this is the last piece that we were gonna do to go through, to get, put it all together. And then we're just gonna evaluate it and, um, uh, and, and actually, I was gonna do that at this meeting, but at the next meeting, I'll go through all of the steps again as to what we're gonna do, and so that would be in your packet for April meeting. Um, oh, you'll get it.
I mean, I'll.
For April meeting.
Yeah, I can send me input to you though, I'll look it over ahead of time.
Um, and so we'll continue with this document to finalize it, and then we've gotta start, um. What is the next step?
Well, we're gonna look at the community survey from twenty twenty, so that you all can see the last meter from the public on park different matters. And you'll see if there are any gaps. And then we will organize everything because the formatting is a little bit of a mess. And we'll bring it back to you guys to start refining what categories we are going to, um, send extra to the plan around. But there's usually four or five main categories that you'll choose as um, the types of strategies we're gonna need to improve it. And then we'll start identifying strategies over that, but we have a full map for you guys to see the timeline. So we're gonna orient you to that after we look at the survey.
And we weren't sure how long this was gonna take this evening, and, um, so we'll, we'll bring you team next time and then we can, then we can get our full plan out from there, but we're, we're right on track with um, with that, uh, map and you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Anything else for that?
That was keeping us organized, you know?
Okay, another item to move on to, item seven B, Clarkville Park restroom. Parkville Parks restroom inventory and styles for determinative changes should be made to serve all users.
Yeah, and, um, I'm not exactly sure how, where we're going with this today, so I think we just wanna open the conversation. I'd like Commissioner Kramer to kind of share his thoughts on why we have this agenda item and what we're talking about. I have some input on that um, as well, but, you know, I did put a reference here for all of the different, um, restroom facilities at the different parks. Um, not necessarily relevant to this conversation because we really, we, um, picked one park or, or we have one, um, is a concern about one park. So, uh, that's what we'll be talking about, and Commissioner Kramer, I'll let you take it from there if you'd like to.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate, we got to talk about this a little bit the other day, but um, during consciousness in the parks, I noticed that we have essentially with two bathrooms there and there's a big line outside of one, and the other one has no line. And that seems like a, kind of a poor use of, of a limited resource being the bathrooms. Um, so what made sense to me would be that they both be all excess bathrooms, you know, for whoever needs to use them. And, uh, and we talked a little bit about what some of those challenges are, and it seems like some of it has to do with, you know, is it a single stall? Is it, um, family style, I guess is the, is the most current way that they're describing those. Um, just a bathroom for anybody that needs to use it type thing, and so I did go look at the other bathrooms in town, I appreciate you having the breakdown here, but the one at Copper Penny's nice, um, it's just a single bathroom, you know? Uh, and it looks like it's, it's, it is wheelchair accessible and everything else. So I thought it'd be nice just for the bathrooms at the, at the main town park, just to be ones that anybody could use and they would, there would be a backup outside of them. Um, that was mainly the thing, just seemed kinda silly to have one reserved, you know, the, the men's restroom is going a lot less used, uh, and I thought it'd be better if they were both just bathrooms. And so I guess some of the challenges have to do with how that door closes and locks and that sort of thing, but, um, maybe it's something we could look into, that's why I wanted to bring it up to the group and see if, maybe we wanted to get in the habit of making you know, bathrooms just be for everybody in that way. You know, kind of as more get developed or built or whatever, um, and I don't know. Yeah, I guess Selma, Mangi, I don't, there's one in the plan or not in the?
There is a restroom in the plan, um, possibly two. Um, we had two in at one point, but I think maybe budget-wise we had to drop one. But we had, um, single use for those as well.
Yeah, and the one at Copper Penny, I mean, of course it's nice, it's one of the newest, but when you go into that one, there's a keypad to get in. I guess like as an override, but you can go in, but you can lock it from the inside, there's a button on the thing and it, that locks it, and then you leave it unlocks it. So, I mean, I don't know, that was kinda nice, so.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the ones at, uh, Centerville Park are, I mean, obviously older and in, in a lot rougher shape, you know, for sure. So, and they have kind of just, uh, wrought iron gates as the doors on that one, so. Anyway, I just, uh, figured it'd be better use of resources, we don't have that many bathrooms, so if we can make them able to have more people be able to use them, I thought that'd be better.
Okay.
That's it.
There are reasons they can't lock from the inside.
Well, yeah, let me give you a little history on those bathrooms, um, and just so you know, I've spoken to both our Public Works Superintendent and our, um, Public Works, uh, gosh, I don't know his title for sure, but he takes care of our parks, Chris Sevis. Um, and he, so we looked at those, um, a few years ago, we had, uh, issues with the doors. So there was no, there was not a stall inside the bathrooms, it was just a single-use bathroom, kind of like Copper Penny, only older and less nice, um, and the doors, um, something happened, they got tweaked and the locks started not working correctly. Particularly in the women's restroom. Um, and we had on several occasions, children getting locked in the bathroom and not able to get out. So the locking mechanism was a deadbolt that had to turn and then, but there was stress on the door because of the hinges and just it being old and water damage, whatever. And so the doors would, you had to, you had to pull on it and turn the latch to get it open. And children couldn't quite figure out how to do that on, and that was particularly on that, on that door, so Public Works came in, they tried to fix the door latches, wasn't working, so their solution was to put stalls inside the bathrooms and take the locks off of the doors. So that means, but the doors don't close all the way either. And so the doors, like the men's door just swings open and is open all the time, you can't really close it. The ladies' door, um, is, you know, it's gapped, so you can't close it really for the kind of privacy you might want. Um, but there's a stall inside, so, um, we did check those today, they are, uh, nicely ADA accessible, um, restrooms with, with that. Um, but we're, we've noticed that there's some issues with the door frame, um, at least on the men's side because it used to get, when, before they put the new sprinkler system in, the sprinkle, sprinklers used to get the gazebo and wrapped it and got, got, um, these doors, so we, um, Chris and I looked at it today and, uh, are thinking that we need to, you know, look at maybe just replacing the doors. And the question came to me, well, if you put a lock on the inside, then you're gonna have the same problem. But if you put the right kind of lock, not a deadbolt, if you have the doors, like door handles like they do at Copper Penny with a push-in lock, that when you turn the handle, the door unlocks and you can leave the bathroom, it should probably be okay. So, um, the challenge that we have with that is, uh, money, money, to replace them because they're steel-framed doors and it's not gonna be inexpensive. But the conversation we had today was in trying to, um, start mapping out the things that we see like that and start planning for during budget season. For those, um, you know, kind of prioritizing some of those things to make that happen. So I know that the, the doors and that isn't necessarily the part of this conversation, but I think it's an important piece of it. And, um, and something that should be addressed. The other thing, um, that I know of in, in all of our park bathrooms is that we do not have a changing station. And a per, and, and so if we make them family, if we put in changing stations, man, we are up in our game pretty, pretty nicely, so.
And with the new door, would it have a new, like a label that just says restroom?
No, that's.
Well, no, but that's my point, rather than doing that, just, I went to lunch someplace and I went to the restroom and on both the bathrooms, it says, whatever, just wash your hands. That's what the sign said, and I thought, that's pretty great, so anyone you know, whatever's available, you could use.
Yeah, I like, you know, when they say family restroom and it has the ADA. You know, I mean, that, it just lets you know that it's, and it also signals to parents that there's a changing station inside there, and if that becomes a standard, then that, then as we have developers building, whatever, that's you know, it's like, hey, well, so we have everywhere else, you know? I noticed there isn't a sign at Copper Penny Park, there's no label as to what that door is. Yes, I mean, I just tried both.
Utility room.
Well, I think the other side of that building is storage or utility or whatever.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so I, I mean, I just tried both doors. But I didn't know, I, I, I was pretty sure one of those was a bathroom, but that's, but there's no indication from the outside.
Right, okay, well, good point, we should look into getting some signage for that bathroom. Probably we need to just decide, we, we wanna have some uniformity and decide, you know, what, what you want that to look like, um, how about we put this back on the agenda for, um, for next month? And we can bring you a couple of ideas, and then I can also start finding out what it's gonna take for us to get those doors replaced. Um, if, if that's an option, that's kinda what Chris was thinking would be.
Yeah, well, town park will use it for so much stuff, I mean, it's such an asset, you know, I mean.
We did talk about, you know, it's probably time for some upgrade in there, the stalls actually make it a little nicer. Um, in some, in some way, um, the sinks though are in pretty bad shape. And so, you know, it's probably time, but we've also had a conversation in the last couple of years about, um, not just improving, but, um, adding additional
Yeah.
bathrooms, because we could really use it and it would save us a lot of money.
Bathrooms, because we could really use it and it would save us a lot of money in our budget.
Are they a hand dryer or are they? Uh, paper towel dispenser?
They're, they're paper towels, yeah, yeah.
Cause I think switching out of those takes quite a lot of maintenance and.
Yeah.
Trash and everything else as well.
Yeah, there, it's, I'm sure it's paper towels, cause we always check them for toilet paper and paper towels during the concert.
Yeah. Um. And down at the river access points, they just have the covered area with the porta potties, that's what's there.
Yes. And that's only a TPCO, the one at uh Two Segood is not covered right now.
Okay.
But part of that, yeah. We're. We're hoping that something will happen with that in the future, so, um. But I also want to, probably a bigger challenge where. Doors are concerned, so actually we need to, we have to involve our police department in this conversation, because they were the ones who really. Had a big say in the, in that bathroom, that Copper Penny, um, so that. There's a grate on the bottom, so you can see if someone's in there.
Yeah.
And um. The interesting thing about that was they made it. Too big to begin with, so you could see everything in there. So they had to go back and reduce it and, um, yeah, it was, it was quite a little debacle, so. Um, but they like to have um visual, um, but I mean, they don't have that really now at Town Park. Um, but that's the, the restroom's at Centerville. I'd like to bring that into the discussion next time, because. Um, not only, I mean, they could use upgrading as well.
Yeah.
So. You know, we can start talking about that and looking at potential funding, especially if we're trying to make them ADA accessible. If they're not, there's a lot of funding out there that we can probably find.
Well, and who goes by and locks and unlocks the main?
So Public Works opens it uh at, in the morning and um, the police department closes it at night and they also do weekends, morning and night.
But the one at Copper Penny auto locks and unlocks, so is, does that, is that a savings of time for, for them to not? Need to go unlock and lock the bathrooms every day?
Well, so that particular park, remember, we haven't taken that park over yet. So the developer um has uh his um. Contractor goes and, or the people that he pays to take care of it, they go and um. Set the, the lock has a set and it's set, that code doesn't let you into the bathroom. I know.
Yeah, yeah.
I try, even if you know the code, there's no way into the bathroom, um, or there's no code, the, I'm sorry.
You don't need a code to get in? When it's unlocked.
You have to use a key to get in.
Oh.
You have to use a key to get in or um, if it, yeah, if it's locked, you have to use a key. Because I called the developer one Sunday when I was at the park and it was not unlocked. And I had a grandchild needing to get in, and so I just called him and said, hey, what's the code? Just tell me. He goes, yeah, you have to have a key.
Uh.
What's the code?
The code is to set the timer for the locking system. What happens though, according to the developer, is that the, it only lasts for ninety days, so you have to go in and reset it. Now, he hasn't sent me the book for it yet and our public works team will get on that and look and kind of make sure that, that um, that we know how to operate it correctly. Uh, or if, I mean, it's like an eight hundred dollar lock, it's a very expensive lock, but you're right, if we have, you know, working locks like that, that just open when they're supposed to and not. I just don't know how many parks actually use those, so we could do some research and find out. But, because there have been times that, you know, our police department gets busy on the weekend and, you know, they don't get over there and so. Anyway, so if you're good with us bringing back this subject, um, next meeting and we'll take it to the next level.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer, for bringing it to us.
All right, somebody moving on to future agenda items, anybody would like to add anything additional? You know, next month, we're gonna revisit both of these seven, item seven items. No? Okay. Well then, I am going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Don't move.
All there. Six seventeen PM.
Thank you, Robert, and Karen, she goes better.
Oh, I was so warm last time, I almost left my sweater on.
There's the camera, oh, it's over there.